...award. Thank you, Ms. Cushman, for your tireless efforts, your hard for service, and the positive impact you continue to make every day. You exemplify excellence, and you continue to grow in greatness. Our next is also District 4, recognition, Ms. Rosemary Winters. Ms. Winters is the 5th grade Special Education Teacher and Special Education Chairperson. She's at Cummins K-8, under the leadership of Principal Julia Callaway. In recognition of Rosemary Winters for her exceptional leadership and unwavering commitment to educational excellence, her contributions are evident throughout the district. Where her unwavering dedication continues to expire, she has been nominated by the And our last, but not least, Ms. Catherine Stout. In recognition of Catherine Stout, of Stout Consulting, for her exceptional contributions and tireless commitment to excellence, Ms. Stout's work is grounded in purpose, integrity, and passion. Her insight and leadership have strengthened community initiatives and inspired positive lasting change. She has been nominated by the Governor of Tennessee to serve on the state's ELA Standards We are now on to the Academic Performance Committee Report.
Thank you, Chair. The report will be included in the superintendent's report when he gives it. Thank you.
We are now on to Budget Audit and Finance Committee Report. Budget Audit Finance Committee Report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. The board, you all received a calendar earlier in the month, and we discussed it at our Boarded Retreat. Let me know if you have any feedback on it, particularly if there are conflicts or anything that you want to be added. I will be, similar to last year, making sure that I hear your board, or your budget priorities as well. The Business System Review that we also discussed during our retreat is also calendared throughout that. One thing I will ask is that we do double-check that the optional things that we did name are added to that budget calendar. So we identified a few areas that are in policy that I think are important, that Chief White outlined, and sort of how policy interacts with our strategy. So I think it's important that we go back and revisit that calendar. And then the last is an announcement. Budget 101 Sessions will, those advertisements and calendar invites or the social aspect alerting the public that they are calendared, will start tomorrow. So be on the lookout for that. And that concludes the Budget Audit and Finance Committee Report.
Thank you. Charter Schools Committee Report.
No report.
Thank you. Community Outreach and Engagement Report.
No report. But I did want to shout out Service Master for providing my, the district and my school book bags and school supplies. Thank you, Service Master.
Evaluation Committee Report. We were given the tool at our committee meeting, so we will start looking over that in our next committee meeting. Policy Governors and Legislation Committee Report.
Thank you, Board Chair. We briefly discussed during the Board Retreat some things that we need to add to our policy agenda in terms of policy revisions and review. We also have several policies on the agenda tonight for unfinished business, but also new business. And finally, we added the resolution for us to consider the Governance Training Consultant that we will be using as we move into our work around goals, visions, and our core beliefs and commitments. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Procurement.
Thank you, Chair. This is where we'll announce the facilities. So the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee will meet September 4th at the TLA Building, 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. We will also have two students that were suggested by principals. We asked for principals to give two names of students that they would select. We will choose from those names that we have. I know it's been a busy time this year, so we have gathered a few names, and so we'll put names in a basket, and we'll pick two. And those students will receive calls and emails from us to the information for the next meeting. We'll also be selecting our two parents as well. So again, the next meeting will be September 4th at the TLA Building. That's going to be at 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Last thing, we will be sending you an agenda by the end of the week. Thank you.
Before we bring General Counsel up, I want to recognize our Communications Department that for the last 15, 19, 35, it's been some days. They have gone out and done 20, well, we're doing 20 in 20, where every morning, we're at a different school. Board members have been able to meet us there, and they get up, and some schools, they're there as early as 6 o'clock. And we play music, well, they play music, I don't, play music, socialize with the kids, and welcome the kids back into school. So if we could just recognize Cavon Jay, John Best, Kalia, our Face Department, it takes a village, and they are part. Every morning, y'all, John cut up so bad yesterday at that Whitehaven School. And he just, Dr. Richmond, he showed out over there at that Whitehaven School. Key, Dee Melrose, that Whitehaven, okay? But we just want to recognize them, because while some are still resting, they're out welcoming our children, letting them know that they matter, speaking positive. Board Member Hugh Garcia and I had a great time, and this board member kissing this morning. I think all of them have been out, or we're going out, and just to be with our kids. When you can get our OG out to welcome the kids early in the morning, Mr. Key, you know you're doing something. But we want to thank you. And also, I see Director Jackson is back. Director Jackson, we honored you for your birthday, and we wanted to say happy birthday to you. Okay, General Counsel, I took some of your time, but...
That's all right. I'll give you the time, Chair. I don't report this evening.
We're now into the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Members, good evening. I'm pleased to report that Memphis Shelby County Schools has successfully opened the new school year. Our school readiness process ensured coordinated preparation across all departments, from academics to operations. We made strong progress in human resources with continued recruitment efforts to fill teaching positions. Our Transportation's Department achieved full route coverage for day one, and our Facilities Team completed extensive summer maintenance and improvements to prepare our schools. Tonight's report provides details on these key areas and our ongoing commitment to operational excellence for our students and staff. And the team will tell you, we're going to have a book study. Our first semester book study is "The Seventeen Indisputable Laws of Teamwork" by John Maxwell. And they often hear me say that one is too small a number to achieve greatness. So I want to thank everyone who made this successful opening of school. I heard Board Chair talk about the Communications Team. But again, there were several people who made it possible, our teachers, principals, bus drivers, custodial and maintenance staff, nutritional services, IT, safety personnel, central office staff, and all support teams who worked tirelessly to prepare for our students. You are the greatness that grows here. And first up, we're going to have Dr. Malone and Mr. Cedric Smith. They're going to speak to you all, Board, and go through how we get ready for school, our school readiness process. So at this time, Dr. Malone and Mr. Cedric Smith.
All right, thank you, Dr. Richmond and Board Members. First of all, I just have to say this, as a former educator or teacher and principal, had no idea all the things that took place behind the scenes. As a teacher and as a principal, we get to school, and all we know is the air needs to be on, we need to have our books, but there's a lot that goes with this process. So Director Smith and I are going to kind of talk briefly about this process. Next slide, please. So if you just take a look at this real quick, this is kind of a cycle of what takes place with us on a weekly basis. We meet with several departments, and Director Smith's going to kind of elaborate on that. But take a look at the first slide. Each week, our departments meet with the OPRs, and we share and update the cross-functional group of the progress toward completing goals related to school readiness. This process starts well early into the summer. We start looking at project monitoring. Reps engage in project monitoring to ensure work and projects are completed. We do a really good job of tracking the school readiness process through something called a spreadsheet. Each department is responsible for completing that, as well as percentages. We analyze the impact. And last, we refine the process. So there's a lot of work that goes into this. And I just have to say, before I turn the mic over to Director Smith, having been in our district almost 30 years, knock on wood, this is probably the best start I've ever been a part of.
All right.
Good afternoon, good evening, Board Members and Dr. Richmond. Next slide, please. Due to time constraints, we just want to recognize all our departments that helped us to have a successful first day of school start success. I want to give a special shout-out, though, to Mr. Feeney and Ms. Stewart for ensuring that all our HVAC issues were handled in a quick manner. And that is the, and this is, and this is the first time in a long time that we did not have to do an early dismissal because of air conditioning issues. So we want to shout out all our departments, and Dr. Richmond, Day One, and I hate this song, but it was boots on the ground.
Next up will be Ms. Michelle Stewart and Mr. Tito Langston, and they will talk about the facilities and start of school for our Facilities and Maintenance Department.
Thank you, Dr. Richmond. So I just did some highlights for this slide, so you'll see that over the summer months, we completed 9,055 work orders. That first table shows, oh, sorry, it got rearranged a little bit. That last table shows you the 9,055 work orders with HVAC, plumbing, electrical leading the way. Those are the things that we completed for start of school. The 10 capital HVAC replacements, those were the board-approved HVAC replacements at those Cromwell Egypt, that list in the middle there that starts. Those are large equipment, so the chillers, boilers, air pumps, air handlers. We did 14 smaller, non-capital HVAC upgrades at that first list there. You see the rooftop units at those schools. Then finally, just, and this again isn't everything that we did, but we did 10 gymnasium LED lighting replacement projects, six indoor and two outdoor lighting projects, and five full parking lot repaving projects. So they were, I'm super proud of my teams. They were, they did an amazing job. So yeah, that's just a little bit of what we did this summer to get ready for school.
Next up will be Mr. Langston. But again, I want to thank Ms. Stewart and the entire Facilities and Maintenance Team. Next up would be Mr. Langston, but I also see Mr. Weary in the back. I want to thank them as we move into the slide on transportation for an excellent job of opening school in regards to transportation. So at this time, next slide, Mr. Langston will update you all on transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Richmond, Board Members. As Dr. Richmond alluded to, Mr. Weary, if you can stand quickly. Mr. Weary, Director Williams, I don't know if she's here, multifaceted operation that we have to run. So specifically with transportation, as Board Members, as the ones who walked with us to knock on doors, you'll remember that buses started long early to do routes. On day one, our vendor first student was fully staffed and making every stop that we had for our students. Looking at quickly at the metrics, you can see the bus routes that we ran. We transport over 25,000 students in our district. We touched close to 9,500 stops. And one of the things that I wanted to highlight is, if you remember last year, we implemented Edge Log Parent Portal Tracking App. Last year, we was around 52 users. This year, we've increased it to, with the outstanding work of the team, to over 2,000 more users, so we're now over 7,200 users for Edge Log Parent Portal.
Thank you, Mr. Langston, for that report. Let's give Mr. Langston, Mr. Weary, and Ms. Williams a round of applause. Next up, we have our Chief of HR, Ms. Oliver. Next slide. And Ms. Oliver will report out on where we are with human resources.
Good afternoon. Thanks, Dr. Richmond and Board. I'm happy to say that we have done some realignment with the HR team, which has caused us to do some level-setting. And right now, with the number of vacancies, provided that, the recommendations that we have in, our regional total vacancies is 85.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, this is teachers, this is teachers. I do want to make one point. You all know that this number is fluid, because we continue to get people to resign, but one of the things, the realignment of some of the team members. And also, going back, because we had postings and level-setting with the postings that we have, so now we are working with what we actually know is real, and also by cleaning out and level of setting, we can move through the process quicker as well.
Next slide, go to the next slide. So I think the next slide captures the essence of what Ms. Oliver is sharing.
I appreciate the support team.
And I would, just one caveat, too, that I want to make. That department, the HR department, was cut by 50%. We're having to rebuild that department. Many of the employees, and I was going to recognize the employees really back in June, as you all know, Ms. Oliver didn't come on until July. But that department has been working tirelessly, even before Ms. Oliver came. I wanted to recognize them at a board meeting, because when you think about half of the individuals who were there, and they continued to work throughout the year, I want to go on record as thanking every one of those employees who worked tirelessly this past year. But I've also told Ms. Oliver, we will probably be bringing before the Board some additional staff people to help her and to help that department, because it was cut so that, again, we want to be able to hire some employees in some key positions, so we can maintain the momentum of being able to staff all of our departments, but also so we can recruit, retain, and place some of the best and the brightest that are in this city as we have to backfill positions. Also know that much of this is fluid. We still have people who are resigning, retiring, and things like that. So we could see 85 positions today, we could be at 115 tomorrow. It goes back and forth. But again, I want to thank Ms. Oliver and the team. It clearly shows when you have someone who knows what they're doing, who's extremely effective, you can move the needle in some of these metrics and areas that we're trying to move. So again, I want to thank her and her team. Next is Research, Evaluation, Accountability, and Data. Mr. White will present. And we've heard a lot of discussion about transparency, what you're going to see with Mr. White's report. He's going to talk about enrollment, but also for my team and I, it's important for us to have feedback, real-time feedback. We will take constructive criticism, because I think as a team, that's how you get better. So Mr. White is also going to share survey data. We wanted to survey both our teachers and leaders, to ask them, so that we wouldn't just have anecdotal feedback. We wanted real-time quantitative and qualitative data to assess how the opening of school was, and so Mr. White will go into detail about that. So Mr. White.
Thank you, Dr. Richmond. Good evening, Board Members. First, we're going to look at some of our current enrollment data. Enrollment, you know, a lot of people will ask me, you know, what's our enrollment? And in a district our size, and in a portfolio district like ours, that's not necessarily an easy answer, in that sometimes it just depends on, well, who do you want to count? Do you want to count the charters? Do you want to count the pre-K kids? So on and so forth. The other thing about enrollment in a district our size is, it changes. I can pull it from our system now, and five minutes later, well, maybe not so much at night, but five minutes later during the day, it'll be a totally different number. Maybe slightly different, but the kids are moving all the time, students are withdrawing and enrolling all the time. But this gives you a summary. These data were pulled yesterday, so they're now even a little bit old, but the first line shows you our pre-K data. Pre-K data can be a little funny, because they first get enrolled in a different system, and then we move those data over to Power School. But what the Power School data are showing is that we are at 2,638, with our projection of being 3,340. But again, those counts are changing as more and more students get enrolled. The charter data are showing that compared to projections, the total for charter schools is down by about 240 students compared to projection. So you can see you're getting last year's number, the projection, and then this year's number. For the non-charter sector, meaning basically all of our schools other than charter, enrollment as compared to projection is down by 2,924. Then when you total all of that up and do not include pre-K, you can see we're at 1,3,280, which is about 3,000 less than projection. And then when you throw in the pre-K, we're at 1,5,918. Now, steadily, the enrollment is increasing, and therefore that gap is closing. That tends to happen a lot for the first 20 days or so. You will see some of our students kind of trickle in. Now, the baseline for staffing number, that's kind of a special number that requires some explanation, in that that is a number that we use when we're looking at the schools that are staffed by formula, and that is most of our schools. What it doesn't include are the charter, the virtual, the adult, the alternative, specialty schools like middle, college, and Holosef Price, and then contract schools, which would be the Excel Center. It also doesn't include the pre-K and the CDC students. The CDC students are some of our special ed students who require the most hours of service, and those classes have their own staffing formulas. So it's kind of that baseline, again, for mostly our traditional schools, grades K through 12, and that number is down 2,945. Now, in looking at that number today, it's down 2,721. So over a day's time, we picked up a couple hundred kids. So you see how, you know, it's constantly moving and changing, but we will expect it to begin to stabilize after the 20th day. Next slide, please. Okay, Dr. Richmond talked about a survey, so I think it's important when you talk about these things, that you have various data that are qualitative, you have your quantitative. You've heard some things that have been discussed, but we did want to gauge our school leaders, 80 school leaders, meaning primarily principals, administrators, responded. We asked them a variety of questions about the, really, this survey targeted day one, the first day of school. So, were all of your teaching positions filled and in place? 41% said yes. And again, you've seen there's been constant movement on that number, but at that particular time, looking at the first day, those 80 respondents, 41% said yes. These were just yes/no questions, so obviously about 60 or 59% said no. Was your facility ready? 87%, 87.5. Did your teachers have the materials and curriculum resources? 70% said yes. Then we asked some questions about technology. For student devices, it was about half. For Wi-Fi, it was about 94%. Power School SIS being ready and available for them, 95%. Interactive whiteboards, like your Promethean and Smartboards, that was at 94%. Was transportation in place and running smoothly on day one? 93%. Were meals in place and cafeteria staff running smoothly on day one? Close to 99%. Did your leadership team receive clear and timely communication and support from the district? About 96%. And you have to remember that these don't necessarily, for any of these, tell the full story. Like for the transportation, somebody might have had one bus or something, you know? So it doesn't mean that it was completely absent at that school or completely problematic. Same thing with your facilities when we asked about things like AC. It's hard to know if that was just one teacher's classroom, or if it was a whole wing of a building, for example. Next slide. We finally asked the school leaders to give an overall rating on a scale of 1 to 10, with 10 being the highest, and that overall rating was an 8.48, pretty much an 8.5. There was an open-ended question where they could provide some feedback. Some of the positives that were noted were about the facilities being clean and operational. And then also, they highlighted the district's efforts to support readiness. And you can see some actual quotes. Smooth and great day, the district provided all necessary supports. Concerns, leaders identified staffing vacancies, late arrival of curriculum resources, and issues with HVAC and student devices. Again, those were some of the themes for the open-ended. We need help making sure all teachers and students are ready with their devices, making sure all are in working order. Recommendations, leaders recommend ensuring staff positions are filled well before school starts, delivering resources and curriculum earlier, and strengthening communication with the district. And the quote there is, ensuring all academic and curriculum components and expectations are prepared in advance of school's start date. So some similar questions were asked of teachers. I think that's what the next slide goes into. It wasn't exactly the same, though some of them were the same. So we asked about the school being clean and ready on day one. 95% of our teachers said yes. The instructional resources, 65%. The same questions about the technology, where the student devices were about a third. The others were higher, with the Wi-Fi, the Power School, and the interactive whiteboards being in the 80s or even up to 91. Student schedules being accurate and distributed, that was at 83 or close to 84%. Daily operations, like arrival, dismissal, dismissal, wow. Transitions and lunch, got tongue-tied there. 94%. And all of this, again, is about day one. And all of this, again, is about day one. Supports for students with special needs, English learners, other required services at 83%. Schools HVAC, 73%. And school leadership, did they clearly communicate expectations and updates? 90, close to 96%. Then the teachers also gave an overall rating from 1 to 10, and that was at 8.18. And you can see from some of the open-ended responses that teachers lauded the overall strong start, noting that most classrooms were ready and leadership was visible. They also expressed appreciation for smooth and planned operations in schools. Great first week, we were strong. Concerns had to do with finalization of master schedules, delayed instructional materials, student device readiness, classroom air conditioning. And then recommendations emphasized earlier planning and scheduling, timely provisions of materials and devices, clearer communication before school starts. And you've got a couple of quotes there for that also. Now, in addition to our leaders and our teachers, we actually had some, a few questions we asked parents. Now, this wasn't exactly geared towards day one, but it was about the opening of school. And our parents were very positive, too. We had 6,937 parents respond. 90% were positive about the registration process using Power School enrollment. 83% were positive about how, and this again was yes/no. Well, actually, I think this was on a scale. I apologize. So it was on the positive end. How well did the school communicate important information before enduring? 83% positive about that. How smooth was your child's first day? Bus route, drop-off, classrooms, teachers? 87%. How prepared did the school seem for the start of the academic year? 81%. And overall, how satisfied are you with the opening? And that was at 87, close to 88%. Next slide. These were some customer service-related questions that were also part of the survey. How would you rate your overall customer service experience with MSCS? That was at 84% positive. When you contacted a school or district office, how responsive and helpful? That was 92%. How respectful and professional was the staff? 90%. And how easy was it for you to get the information or support you needed? So overall, these data, these survey data, really support a lot of what you've heard tonight, but we do recognize some areas that need some additional support. Just a couple other things that I actually mentioned in the board retreat with you last week, that you would be getting a copy of our update report on the 100-day plan. That should have been left for you at your seats. And then similarly, your quarterly impact report for quarter four, basically your year-end report for school year '24-'25, also at your seats. Not going to spend a lot of time on those. Just wanted to make those available to you in a timely fashion and give you the opportunity to read those at your leisure.
Thank you, Mr. White. Again, board members, I want to thank the entire team. I also want to thank you all for your support. When you take a look at this survey, the reason I wanted to do the survey is I know it's probably, I don't remember a time when we've done a survey. So particularly, the survey is to establish a baseline. So as we continue to prepare for school readiness and to open schools, this is a baseline. We can use these data, or whomever is sitting in these, in this seat can use these data going forward to evaluate our effectiveness in school readiness and opening school from year to year. Because I think that's important. That's an important metric for us to evaluate ourselves against each year as we start to talk about transparency and being, again, the number-one urban school district in the country.
Dr. Richmond, I have some board members that have questions. Board Member McKinnon, Vice Chair La.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Dr. Richmond, to you and your team for this report, but more importantly, for the effort, time, and dedication and commitment that you all put into making sure that school was ready for our students on the first day. So I think you all should give yourselves a big hand of applause because you all did a phenomenal job. You knew the question I was going to ask about baselines. So thank you. So this creates a baseline for us to keep, to make sure that, one, we're looking at how continuous improvement so that we can keep moving the needle up. But, and also, I wanted to ask a couple of questions with the HR. You made mention that you all were going to bring, you were going to bring us some more positions that you wanted to, for us to invest in. So when you do that, can you make sure that you let us know the current number of employees and then the expected number of employees with justifications for those employees? I think it's important because a lot of the questions that I'm getting from constituents is the number of administrators that we have and what they actually function and do. So I think if people understand the number along with what they do and how effective it is when you give us this data, I think that would be, go a long way for people to understand what it takes to run this entity. And then with enrollment, I wanted to ask you about the impact on the budget, particularly when I look at the projections and then when I look at where we are. And I know we're about, what, 1,000 students off from our, how many students are we off from our projected?
Right at 3,000, about 2,900?
Closer to 2,900 today.
Okay. So just wanting to understand the impact on the budget, but also when you're thinking about, when you're thinking about baseline and how to get better, I noticed in the '24-'25 year, 15-day, we had more students on the 15th day than we have in this particular school year. And I'm just wondering if you all are going to try to take a look at, like, what did we do that we got that bigger lift on about the 15th day last year than we, and we could do again for next upcoming school year? Just putting that in there.
And I want to make a quick correction. It was 2,900 on the slide, but it's about 2,700 today.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Excellent question. We'll continue. Mrs. Davis oversees our attendance liaisons. So our attendance liaisons, as well as school administrators, are calling students who are on their, students who have not shown up. In regards to the budget, we'll start, we've started meeting every Friday to do what's called staff adjustment. So we'll start to look at adjusting staff and moving people around to see what impact it has on the budget. We're hoping that we'll be able to somewhat reconcile with those students as opposed to also looking at the number of vacancies that we still have. We won't do staff adjustment until following up after fall break. So at this point, I don't think it will have any major impact on the budget. Now, one thing it may have an impact on may be proximity teachers, where we would need less, maybe we'll need less, we may need less sections, but we're still looking at that. I think as of today, and Ms. Jordan can correct me if I'm wrong, we're up to about 49 proximity teachers. But again, we could adjust that at any given time as we start to look at staff adjustment.
And just real quick, we pay $4 million for proximity, up to $4 million?
Up to $4 million.
So that means that we could pull that back because we're not using them, correct?
If we do not use the full complement of 70 teachers and I think 380, 40 sections, roughly? 340 sections. Help me, Ms. Jordan. Am I correct in the number of sections? I know it's 70 teachers, but I forget the exact number of sections.
It's 401 sections, and that's roughly 57 full-time teachers, and it's pay-as-you-go. So if we don't keep the people that we have staffed right now, all the way up through the end of May, we'll never reach that final number in the contract. So if all of our positions get filled in a month, then we only have a month's invoice. And good evening, everyone. I'm sorry for not greeting you first.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
You answered two of my questions. I just want to give Stephen Weary a shout-out because I have not had a phone call this year about the buses. Michelle, I want to give you a shout-out because you were my favorite. Great job, everybody. Superintendent already answered my questions, so I want to say kudos to this year. I have been on the board for a heap of years. And this superintendent didn't pay me to say this. This has been the best year ever with the start of school. And greatness rose here in MCS.
Board Member Otte.
Thank you, Board Chair. I have a couple of questions. Dr. Richmond, so I heard the vacancies, we're down to 85. That's great work. I had a question. I was asked to by a few teachers earlier this week as far as the teachers that we have that have come on board within the last one to three years. What are we doing to provide additional support for those new teachers?
That's a great question. Board Member Otte. Ms. Addison, do you or Dr. Whitelaw want to answer that question for me? Ms. Addison?
Good evening, Superintendent and board members. So currently, we are working to ensure that all of our teachers receive a mentor. We are in the process of receiving the list of teachers who will be serving as mentors for our new teachers this year.
So each teacher will receive a mentor? It'll be new teacher, one to three, year one to three?
Yes, ma'am.
It'll be one mentor per teacher or?
So for the first-year teacher, it'd be one-to-one. For the years above, it'll be a ratio.
Okay. Awesome.
Also, Board Member Otte, we'll be working with those teachers. There are some teachers who need to receive their certification. I know our new HR chief, Ms. Oliver and I, we've talked about how to engage those teachers who are needing to either take the praxis or to be enrolled in an EPP program, looking at their first, second, or third year. And as we start the school year, how are we engaging with those teachers to ensure that they're getting the support that they need in order to reach full certification? In the past, we've had approximately about 1,200 of those teachers with each cohort. And when I say cohort, we probably have about 400 that are in year three, about 400 that are in year two, and about 400 that are in year one. So we want to engage those individuals so that they don't reach their third year receiving a permit and we're unable to help them to become certificated. So the plan is to, again, for us to engage, but we're also looking at partnering with, like, MTR, TFA. There are some other EPP programs that we're looking at partnering with them as well to help us better support those teachers. To answer your question.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have one additional question, or maybe one in a comment. So as far as PD hours are concerned, how many PD hours are the teachers required to complete each year?
Excellent question. What we decide to do is to differentiate professional development based on the years of experience. I think what we've said is that if you're a seasoned veteran teacher, it's 40 hours. And I think if you're a novice teacher, it's 60 hours of professional development.
The teachers are required to complete the Safe Schools training outside of their regular workday. Will those Safe Schools trainings be added to those, accredited to those hours that they need?
No, the Safe Schools training, those things are driven by policy, many of them, like the multi-hazard training. Teachers have to have that via risk management and just as a safety and compliance. The professional development that we're asking them to engage in that is required is professional development that is geared toward teaching and learning and instruction. So it's two different types of professional development.
Got it. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Board Member Murphy.
Board Member Williams. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Richmond, I want to say thank you to you and your staff for this. You guys have worked hard on this, and I appreciate you. And I know that we have had an uphill battle in these last few months, but you guys hung in there. You work with us, we work with you, and I appreciate this. It's readable, it's tangible, you can put your hands on it. So if they have any questions for us, guess what? We have a 100-day plan here. We can just hand them a book and we don't have to guess. So thank you, Dr. Richmond. Thank you to your staff. Job well done.
Thank you, Board Member Murphy.
Board Member Williams?
Yes. Can I get one of these doctors to give me the difference in data? Were we talking about rating teachers as their growth measures from proximity learning teachers to teachers in the classroom? Is there a gap between the achievement of those students?
I'll defer to Mr. White. Mr. White, would you talk to Board Member Williams about TIM scores for our teachers? Thank you.
Student achievement.
Okay. Student achievement.
Yes, Board Member Williams, we have looked at that, and there is a difference. The proximity teachers overall don't tend to perform as well in terms of those measures. And, you know, we certainly recognize that, and that's why this work on vacancies is so important.
How many proximity teachers do we have at this time?
I'm going to have to defer to Ms. Jordan for that.
Is it 49, Ms. Jordan? 49. 49 proximity teachers as of today.
And with those proximity teachers, there is another person in the classroom actually working as well, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Board Member Williams.
And what areas are they most? What subjects?
ELC subjects and, of course, tested subjects, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Board Member Porter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I haven't heard in a lot of conversation around the 2024-2025 TCAP scores. And so according, when I was doing my research, according to those scores, math is our lowest-performing subject ever across district-wide, I think at 18%. And so I'm just trying to see, I heard Commissioner Garcia just told me it was addressed in the secondary board retreat, I wasn't here. But just what are the new approaches we're taking towards addressing those math deficiencies? I assume we're talking about proximity learning and just having a physical teacher in the classroom. So I guess how many certified teachers will there be in classrooms that's teaching math? And two, how are we just addressing the TCAP scores relative to math? And I think science is the highest one, but relative to math, how can we bring those scores up and help those schools that are struggling in the bottom 5%? What new approaches are we doing?
Thank you for your question, Board Member Porter. We did address your question. We know specifically Algebra I and Algebra II were areas in math where we didn't do as well as we've done before. We talked about, again, trying to recruit and have a highly effective teacher in those classes. We also, we didn't name the partner, but we also know when we look at our grades K through 5, particularly grades 3 through 5, our students did well. But many of them did well because they had tutors and support. If you think about one of our partners who we didn't have last year, that partner provided ACT as well as numerous support for our students. We didn't have that along with, again, not having highly effective teachers in the classroom. But I'll also defer to Ms. Maples and the team, our curriculum team, to talk about the additional supports. Or Dr. Whitelaw, I'll see Dr. Whitelaw if she wants to add as well what we're doing in. she wants to add as well, uh, what we're doing in numeracy, particularly for the end, of course, grades that Board Member Porter is speaking to.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Porter. Uh, so Superintendent, uh, Richmond, so thank you for the question. A couple of things that, and again, that Tuesday, we did go into depth, uh, but I do want to give a round of applause to the team, uh, Kinda, who's been leading the work, as well as, uh, Dr. Maples. A couple of things that we have already, when you talk about innovative strategies, one thing that we want to do is work with teachers and make sure they understand the content and the pedagogy. So that's the one area. And also what we've been saying and what we said on Day Two, tier-one instruction is critical. And so what we mean by that first teaching, so first teaching is so important that we want to make sure that teachers have the support, again, around the pedagogy, what, um, and, and Kinda can also, Ms. Kinda can also speak to it in our academic plan. So working with teachers, but being very granular and working with them in regions and going in and supporting those teachers. Right now, uh, she's going in giving feedback just around the questioning protocol, also giving feedback of how we're engaging students. So what's gonna be different, pedagogy, how we engage students, how we use the gradual release model. And so those are some of those things that we talked about on the second day of the retreat, and I'll have the team, if they want to dig deeper, but those are just some of the high-level things around the work. But first, we got to make sure teachers understand the pedagogy, work with them, as well as getting students to be engaged. And then, Kinda, if you need to add, please.
Yeah. Add to it, uh, Ms. Kinda, uh, and then I'm gonna wrap it up, uh, and share how we're going to approach it as a team.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I think the biggest lift is creating lesson plans for teachers with the correct math, the correct steps, the whole nine. We also have academic coordinators who are, and principals, who are supporting them in practicing the delivery of those lesson plans to, uh, teaching is more than, you know, just walking around talking to kids, right? And so we have to teach, people have to know both content and pedagogy. Um, I think, uh, Council of Great City Schools referred to it as an art and a science. So we're working on both of those parts. And the biggest thing, the biggest lift for us is creating, um, the lesson plans for teachers to use, and they are excited and they are using them.
And to add additional context, and to add additional context, Board Member Porter, uh, the team and I, each month, uh, will be bringing before the board as part of the academic plan. Uh, last month, or this month, uh, we bought, uh, SPL, and we talked about our strategic, uh, literacy partners. And we talked about mainly, uh, our K-through-two grade band. We'll be bringing grades three through five next month. The month after that, we'll be bringing grades K-through-eight. And then the month after that, we'll be bringing nine through twelve, where we'll be talking about the academic plan and how it relates upon the pathway to greatness. Uh, and we'll be talking about those content areas that board members, uh, have interest in and want, want to see. But instead of bringing the whole entire, uh, academic plan, we wanted to bring those grade bands so we could go deep and explain into you all what we're doing around each grade band and how we're supporting all of the content areas, as well as how we're aligning the work.
We're definitely looking forward to, with all the interventions and new approaches, uh, I guess we're looking forward to the, the incremental data that we can get and just seeing how we can, um, support those schools at the bottom five percent and just seeing what new results that we can come up. So, so I guess next year, I'm looking forward to eighteen percent or greater.
Thank you. And in regards to TCAP, we have shared proficiency. What you'll see this week is we'll, uh, it's embargoed, but there'll be an announcement around growth. So remember, this data, it trickles out. We don't get all of it together. In November or December, we'll get our letter grade. So we have shared proficiency. This week, we're going to share, once the embargo is lifted, you'll have the growth data.
Board Member McKenney.
Real quick, could you please make sure that all of this information you just presented to us is uploaded so people can see it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member, Board Member McKissick.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Dr. Richmond, I, I would like it if you could speak to, um, our listening audience regarding something that I was really impressed with that came out of our retreat last week in, in relation to TCAP and MCSCS, um, taking a different avenue toward reporting our own numbers and not waiting till this eleventh hour of the trickle-out of, uh, stats from just one day of testing. Can you share with everyone, like, that approach that we're going to do as a district now regarding our testing and controlling the narrative that you were speaking to about, um, it's, it's really misleading to say that, you know, our children can't read when they obviously can read? And if you could just speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Board Member McKissick. Uh, what we talked about is that, uh, the TCAP does not assess reading level. What assesses reading level is I Ready. The TCAP assesses proficiency based on state standards. And so we wanted to explain that to the listening, uh, public because sometimes when the listening public sees that our students are not scoring proficiency, the assumption is that they're not on reading level, and that's not true. Uh, but again, our team and I, uh, we're gonna take on the task of really getting out into the public, uh, explaining to the larger public and all of our stakeholders, first of all, what the TCAP assesses, what also I Ready and other assessments assess, uh, so that people will be more informed, uh, around our assessments. We also want to talk to the listening public about certain milestones that have already been, uh, set through legislation, uh, so that they'll be aware of what those milestones are, uh, and how our students are measuring, uh, up in regards to those milestones that have been set for us.
Thank you for that because it's so important to say the message over and over again till it drills in because, you know, people believe what they are told through hearsay, but let's, let us be our own hearsay with facts that they can then follow up on, on the website. So, but it really resonated with me when we addressed that in retreat last week. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
There being no further lights. We're now on to unfinished business. Proposed Policies reading, proposed Policy Second Reading.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, um, Board Members. We have for second reading and approval tonight. It is recommended that the Shelby County Board of Education approves proposed revisions to the following policies. Zero-zero-zero-zero, School Board Meetings. Zero-zero-zero-two, Board Member Qualifications and Election. Zero-zero-zero-four, Board Officers and Duties. Zero-zero-zero-five, Method and Election of Board Offices. Zero-zero-one-two, Board Policy Development, Adoption, Dissemination, and Review. Zero-zero-one-six, Orientation of School Board Candidate. Zero-zero-one-seven, Board Conference Travel. Zero-zero-two-five, Constituent Services, and fifty-twenty-four, Student Suicide Prevention. Just as a note, Policy Number Sixty-twenty-four, Cell Phone, um, Personal Communication Devices. You all suspended the rules last month and approved that particular policy on first reading.
Thank you. Board Member McKenney.
Thank you, um, Dr. Richmond and, um, Ms. Stewart. We talked about, um, Policy Zero-zero-zero-zero, School Board Meetings. Did we make those adjustments?
I did make the adjustments.
Okay.
So it should be reflected. Instead of the forty-eight hours, it should be five days.
Thank you. And just for everyone's clarity, that means we're sticking with five days, five, five days for board work session, five days for a school board meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Board Member Otay.
Thank you, Chair. I did have one other question regarding academics. Um, are all the teachers provided, uh, provided with lesson plans? And if so, are they also required to do an additional lesson plan?
In the content areas, all of the lesson plans have been done for the content areas. They have those lesson plans. They're free to use those lesson plans, but if they want to modify them, they can. But our goal was to provide all teachers with lesson plans for those, for specific content areas.
Which content areas?
The four major content areas.
Okay.
ELA, Math, Science, Social Studies.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Hewitt Garcia.
Thanks. Uh, we approved six-zero-two-four already.
Yes.
Uh, can we make sure it's in the policy manual on board docs?
It is.
On the active policies?
It should be posted.
As of this morning, I was, I tried to look it up. So may, I'll look and maybe I'm looking in the wrong area. Um, I am curious, and I don't need this information right now. Have we seen, this was my experience with a couple incidents, is where we go on a lockdown and it, it's a false alarm, nothing was wrong. We, we were taking a precaution where in previous years, I received a dozen texts from parents or teachers saying, what's going on? And then I didn't get any this year. Is a byproduct of this that we're not seeing panic in, in moments of, like, safety and security? Have we seen sort of false information or warrior panic spread slower? Uh, which seems like a positive byproduct. I'm just curious, are we, are we able to, uh, reduce anxiety on the safety and security? So whoever can answer? I don't know if we measure that in any way or?
No, I, I think it's a great question. I think the question that you're asking is that being that students do not have access to cell phones.
Yes.
Is it mitigating, uh, students and/or people panicking and spreading false information or narratives that we can now better mitigate, uh, because students do not have access to cell phones? I would say possibly yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I get it, that's, it's not making parents wrong. If my baby texts me and said, we heard something was wrong, I would, I would text my school board member too. Um, but, yeah, I'm just curious if there's any information or if that's a way that we can get a pulse on it. I'd be interested because I, I wasn't expecting that as an outcome of a cellphone ban, but to me, it allowed us to truly investigate something and have a, and take precautions without panicking our community. So, that's all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question. And we are, uh, as you asked, Board Member Garcia, we are tracking, uh, cellphone data, uh, relative to the policy.
Is there a motion and a second to adopt a new?
Motion.
Motion by Board Member Otay? And board, second by Board Member Williams. Roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick.
Aye.
Board Member Garcia.
Aye.
Board Member Porter.
Aye.
Board Member Murphy. Board Member Love. Board Member McKenney.
Aye.
Board Member Otay.
Aye.
Board Member Williams.
Aye.
Board Chair Coleman.
Aye.
You have seven in the affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. We're now on to new business, new board business, proposed policies, first reading.
Thank you. For first reading, we are presenting proposed revisions to the following policies that will align our policies with federal and/or with state requirements. Policy Number One, zero-zero-nine, Non-Discrimination Statements. Policy Number Five, zero-zero-two, Programs for Students with Disabilities Under IDEA. Fifty-nineteen, Early Transition to College Program. Sixty-nineteen, Student Rights and Due Process, and Sixty-forty-three, Healthcare Management.
No action on the policies will be, need to be taken tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Board Member McKenney.
Yes, I'd like to remove eleven point three.
Eleven point.
Reading Horizons.
Eleven point one, approval, St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, Inc., Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, and Medicine Partnership MOU, no dollar amount. Eleven point two, approval, Strategic Partners of Literacy MOU, ninety-one thousand, eight-hundred-eighty-three dollars and four cents. Eleven point three was removed. Eleven point four, approval, Dual Enrollment Memorandum of Understanding Between MSNBCS and College Partners, Tennessee College of Applied Technology, Tennessee Tech, University of Memphis, and Southwest Tennessee Community College. No dollar amount. Eleven point five, approval, Memphis Symphony Orchestra, Inc., ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Eleven point six, approval, Save the Music Foundation, J. Diller Music Tech Grant, Craigmont High School, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. Eleven point seven, approval, State Special Schools Agreement with Shelby County School Board of Education, no dollar amount. Eleven point eight, approval, Mindsets Academy, LLC, three-hundred-eighty-nine thousand dollars. Eleven point nine, purchase approval, LaMond On College and Hollis F. Price, Middle College High School, a hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars. Eleven point ten, approval, RICA, thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Eleven point eleven, approval, Pre-ACT Assessment, three-hundred-forty-five thousand, eight-hundred-thirty-five dollars. Eleven point twelve, approval, Open Texts, Inc., eighty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-forty-eight dollars. Eleven point thirteen, approval, B4 Plaid, Inc., Treadwell Elementary School and Treadwell Middle School. No dollar amount. It's the extension of the completion date from August the thirtieth to October the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Eleven point fourteen, approval, naming of Fairley High School Auditorium to be named after Pastor Robert J. Matthews. Eleven point fifteen, donation acceptance, Middle College High School, fifty-seven thousand, six-hundred-sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Eleven point sixteen, approval, Protech Professional Technologies, Inc., six-hundred-twelve thousand, three-hundred-thirty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. Eleven point seventeen, approval, Line V Systems, US, Inc. No dollar amount. Eleven. Wait a minute, my page is mixed up. I'm sorry. My sub-pages were messed up. One-hundred-forty-seven thou- eleven point seventeen, approval, Line V Systems, US, Inc., a hundred-forty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-fifty-two dollars and eighteen cents. Eleven point eighteen, approval, Emergency Medical Resources, PLLC, fifteen thousand dollars. Eleven point nineteen, resolution approval, Physical Year, August, twenty-twenty-five, Budget Amendment. Eleven point two, eleven point twenty, resolution approval, Shelby County Board of Education Assignment of General Fund Balance. May I have a motion and second?
I move. I so move it. We approve. Second.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Hewitt Garcia, second by Board Member. McKissick. Roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick.
Aye.
Board Member Garcia.
Aye.
Board Member Porter.
Aye.
Board Member Murphy.
Aye.
Board Member Love. Board Member McKenney.
Aye.
Board Member Otay.
Aye.
Board Member Williams. Board Chair Coleman.
Aye.
You have nine in the affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, which one? Okay, we'll do eleven point three, Reading Horizon.
Thank you, Board Chair. Dr. Richmond, I have a couple of questions around Reading Horizons, particularly since this is, I understand this is the first time that we've had a dyslexia-specific intervention for our students. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So one of the things I, I was looking at and, um, wanting to make sure Okay. So one of the things I was looking at and wanting to make sure that I understood. We talked about Tier 1 and Tier 2. This is a Tier 2 intervention. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so with that, do we, ensuring that we are doing, and you have everything you need to ensure that we are implementing this with fidelity? So I was taking a look at the contract, and I was looking at the professional learning. And my question becomes, is, and this is under your, this is to you, for you and your expert, your expertise and your folks around you. I'm looking at the number of sessions of professional learning, and then the number of people, and I'm looking at, this is, just, I need you to let us know that this is sufficient to get what we need done.
Thank you, Board Member, thank you, Board Member McKinney. What I'll do is allow Dr. Maples to answer the question in regards to implementation, and how we will ensure that it's being implemented with fidelity. Dr. Maples?
Yes, good evening, Board. So, Board Member McKinney, we do have, I'm glad that you dug into the contract. So we do have a set of training hours available for the initial round of implementation because our goal is to train one interventionist, a single interventionist at each school this first year. We do know our contract is limited due to, you know, the available funding and the dollar amount. So we wanted to make sure that we brought it under a reasonable amount. And so we will have people on the ground. So there'll be probably about six to eight trainers that come in for that training. And then they will support our RTI team, made up of a program director and a clerk. And they will support that team with going out into the buildings to coach, to provide that in coach, in real-time coaching to the teachers that are trained, those interventionists.
So I have a follow-up question. Do you mind if I, thank you. Does that mean that, well, I guess, this model of professional learning and training, is that something that the publisher is recommending that will get us the outcomes it claims that that curriculum will provide us? Or is it something different? Because I heard you also say, "dollar amount." Because I want to make sure we're doing, to implement something with fidelity, we need to do what the publisher says we need to do in order to get the outcome they claim we're going to get. So my question to you, do you need more money to get this done and to implement it with fidelity?
Okay, so according to the vendor, this would be the bare minimum that we would need to begin this implementation. And again, considering that we are starting this year with one interventionist from every building, we know that in years to come, yes, we will continue to expand, depending on how, what we see with that ROI. But for this year, working with the vendor, that would be the minimum that's in the contract that we need to be successful.
Okay, I'm gonna...
I guess a better question would be, and help me, Dr. Maples. A district our size, how many students could we assume from the assessment would be dyslexic?
To clarify, they, we are identifying students with characteristics of dyslexia. So we are not identifying or identifying the diagnosis of dyslexia. So these are students, characteristics of dyslexia, that really struggle with foundational literacy. So that's really what we're finding. And typically, and I think we had approximately, at the end of this past school year, we had 4,976 students identified for characteristics of dyslexia.
So, in essence, per school, you could have three students, you could have four students, you could have five students, you could have six students. And what she's saying is you would have a number of students who would have characteristics. We're training at least one person per building. So when you think about 4,000 students, that's not a lot of students to support in regards to if it was 20,000 or 30,000 or 40,000 students. You're talking about a small group of students who will need Tier 2, which is tailored support around characteristics of dyslexia.
I'm gonna push back a little bit on that because I think we need to be, I would, we can't hold the publisher or the, whatever, the curriculum accountable if we're not doing what we can do in terms of a full complement. So my question to you is, if you feel confident that that is enough to, one, deal with that Tier 1, the characteristics of dyslexia, because you're going to then have some that are going to actually be dyslexic, and that gets us into remediation, doing that correctly. I'm, just want us to be sure that our students, basically, our students don't deserve bare minimum. They deserve what we, I want to make sure we're doing everything we can. And this is no, it's, again, I'm, I think I'm saying as a board member that we can discuss amongst ourselves. If, ask for what you need. And if you, if you think you need more, then I would say, ask for more. So that we make sure that, again, this is about the students, and that we're making sure we get everything we possibly can to them. So I'm, I'm just simply asking you, I'm not going to hold this up. I'm saying, take a look at it, and if you think there's more that we need to do in order to implement this with fidelity. Because one of the things that we're asking is, if you're expecting this outcome, the only way you can get the outcome that the publisher says you can get is if you implement it with fidelity. And once you do that, then we can determine whether this actually works for us, and if it's the right publisher. So first, we got to hold ourselves accountable to doing what they tell us we need to do in the right way, in order to get the right, to get the outcomes that they claim they're going to get. And then after that, when we're doing it right, then we can hold them accountable. So that's, that's, that's the question, and that's what I would like for you to consider.
Thank you. Is this only a Tier 2 support, or are there Tier 3, is there a Tier 3 component?
Both tiers, Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports.
Thank you.
Board Member Otte, did you have your light on? Board Member Williams?
I see one thing in here that says, "This process can only be implemented by," and it says, "a competent teacher." It says, "A teacher who has these qualities." So if the teacher has those qualities, why would we need them? Because they're saying, "This can only be taught by a competent teacher who can read," they said, "teacher, reading, writing, and punctuation," it says. Well, we know that. So is that saying the only person, are we not having those teachers now? Why would we need to adopt this to say, "We must have a competent," we get that part of it. And they must be able to transmit this information, that you're going to measure the students by in the testing. But it's not very clear to me what they would be doing to do it. It only says, "A clear, competent teacher educator," is what it says. "Who can teach reading, writing, and something," it says. So that doesn't say very much to me.
Yeah, thank you.
You must have that.
Thank you, Board Member Williams, for the question. I think what we're trying to do when we think about a Tier 2 intervention, and use an interventionist to support this, is to not really place any additional undue burden on the classroom teacher. This is an opportunity for an interventionist and someone to do what you would call a small group pull-out, where we'll have this intervention, this interventionist trained in using Reading Horizons to provide this tailored support for students who exhibit characteristics of dyslexia.
You have to have a degree. Because it only says here that the educator must be, the curriculum must address the following, writing and spelling, reading, writing, and spelling.
Some of the, some of the interventionists may have degrees, and some of them may not. Again, they're going to participate in the training so that they'll be able to utilize the curriculum.
It says, "A knowledgeable educator." I think it's very broad in its concept because it doesn't say that a certificate is even required.
Yes, sir.
Or a degree is required.
Yes, sir.
It says, "They must be competent in those areas."
Yes, sir.
I don't know how that's measured.
Well, similar to what we're doing with our SEAs, we could also look at providing this training to our SEAs who are also doing pull-out, small group instruction, helping to reduce teacher-to-pupil ratio. We want to ensure that people have all the tools in their toolbox that they can to support our students.
Board Member Hewitt Garcia?
Oh, thank you. I tend to agree with Board Member McKinney in that we are doing the bare minimum. I think we know just from a large district that the chances of turnover are pretty high. So if we're already at the minimum, and say we lose two trainers, can we actually even understand? So if there is an opportunity to have additional who are maybe cross-trained in the event that there is, I think that's good, that's good talent planning. It doesn't, I don't want to hold it up tonight either, but I guess my question is, can we, can we amend this to add additional people if we experience that? Or, I have a second question that's related to the budget, but can we amend this if we decide, hey, this is, we can tell this is making traction? Can we amend this?
Board Member Hewitt Garcia, definitely, that would, that would be an option as we continue to think about the efficiency. And as we see, to your point, that turnover, we definitely want to be able to, and be flexible, and consider an amendment if needed.
And then my second question, and I'll preface this with, we should do this because this is the right thing to do, to provide services for students who, who have exceptionalities and need special services here. But in the TESA formula, if I'm understanding it, this is, if we do identify students who have characteristics of dyslexia, it adds 20% to the base, or what is the percentage to the base under the unique learning needs? 20%? So if I'm doing the math of the base of 7,700? Okay, ish, ask close, there we go. 20% on top of that, and you're talking about 4,000 student, let's, almost 5,000 students, you're talking about almost $8 million in our budget. This, this is, is one case where it's pays for itself. So, but we are also probably going to capture additional students. So in this case, I wouldn't hesitate. If, if budget is the barrier, bring it to us to improve the experience for our kids, but also, this is, it's good business in this case, based on how the state is allocating dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member McKissick?
So excited. Thank you, Chair. So, Dr. Richmond, first of all, I want to say, I'm very excited. There has been a constituent in our community, Mrs. Kelvina Hunt, who has been championing this for so, so long. And I'm glad that I've learned, had so much awareness over the years since I came onto the board. And just the fact that we are finally at this point, that needs to be celebrated. And I know it won't be perfect, and that's, but we got to start somewhere, and this is good that we are starting. So my question then is, you know, how, at what point will you report back to say, just where we are? Just even, you know, like you've got your 100-day plan. How are we going to look at this to see how it's going? I know you won't have full information until sometime out, but, you know, is there going to be a timetable of reporting back? Is just checking on, seeing how these students are doing with whatever we do approve, if we approve it tonight?
Board Member McKissick, thank you for that question. It's a great question. I think you should look to see us reporting out on it monthly as part of our SPL work. This came out of the SPL work, where we think about our strategic partners in literacy. We're going to use this to support our students around literacy. And so I would just challenge the team, as we do our monthly meetings and report outs, that this become a dashboard item, where we can either update the board, or we can update those partners via that committee meeting. But we can also at any time as well bring before the board for work session, our committee meetings, information around how we're implementing this particular program.
All right, thank you. Can I move that we vote on this? More questions?
Board Member Otte?
We can move. But I do, I do want to thank, I do want to thank you for that, for the program. And she already asked my question, so I'm not going to ask any questions about that. Reporting back was my question. Want to give kudos to Lachandria Owens, who's my parent ambassador for Cordova. Also want to highlight some positives with the St. Jude Partnership, that's an awesome STEM program. Also, the Strategic Literacy Partnership, excited about that with Urban Child Institute and High Family. And also want to just thank all of our donors and supporters that are giving us those grants we're receiving to enhance our student learning environment. Now, we can move.
Vice Chair Love?
As someone who suffers from dyslexia, I am very pleased. You have my full commitment and my vote.
Thank you.
Board Member Murphy?
Call for question.
I so move. Second?
Roll call vote please.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Garcia?
Aye.
Board Member Porter?
Aye.
Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McKinney?
Aye.
Board Member Otte?
Aye.
Board Member Williams?
Aye.
Board Chair Coleman?
Aye.
You have nine in the affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. We're now on to the University of Memphis agreement.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Whitelaw, University of Memphis agreement. I don't see Ms. going, so Dr. Whitelaw.
What's wrong, Board Member Otte? You said, "Hold on"? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm coming, hold on.
Thank you, Superintendent Richmond. So basically, we want to bring the University of Memphis, the clinical affiliation agreement. So we want to thank definitely the team for working hard. But I want to go ahead and just give highlights and also any additional information. Tonight, we want to bring this to the board to approve the University of Memphis School Psychology Affiliation Grant, agreement for the 25 through the 28 school years. Again, this will provide University School Psychology graduate students with supervised clinical training within Memphis Shelby County Schools. Just to give you some background, the University of Memphis Psychology Affiliation Agreement is a partnership, again, that allows the graduate students in the psychology program to gain supervised clinical experience with inside of our school. And students engage in activities such as psychological assessment, behavior intervention planning, counseling, and crisis support under the supervision of our licensed MSCS clinicians. So on the next slide. So again, through the previous years that we've had this particular agreement, two graduate students were placed in the district during the 23-24 school year that helped to provide supervised mental health and behavior support services, as well as both students successfully completed the program. No students were placed in the 24-25 school year, as we did not have a contractual agreement. So we do want to bring this back because we do see the need, as well as working alongside our partners to recruit students to the district.
Thank you. Board Member Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one question. Would this be interference with them doing away with a DEI? Because recently, they suspended it.
Yeah, Board Member Murphy, I don't think this would have anything to do with DEI. I think this is through the psychology department at the University of Memphis.
Okay, I just wanted clarity on that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board Member Hewitt Garcia?
Do we pay students?
Let me get that, we don't have, for as far as internship. I know we do pay students through the special ed department, but I will make sure, all right, Donna, come on up, because I want to make sure we get that question right. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board Members and Superintendent.
No, no, I want to pay, oh, go ahead.
No, we, we do not pay interns, unfortunately. We would like to though.
So is this their full-time job?
So this is an internship. They'll be here during their field placement, where we will supervise them. They're only here maybe two days a week. They're in school, and then part of their education is to receive those supervised work with us in the district.
It's part of their graduate program.
Yeah, is it part of like a practicum?
It is.
Yes.
Yes, so part of the hours they need to receive.
Well, generally, I, I think we, I know they get credit, but there was a time when students were paid, and that was, I think that was cut from state funding. I think we should, if there's an opportunity... I think we should, if there's an opportunity to pay students, even if they decide to come work for us, a bonus or, or something, I, I think credit is not enough. I mean, I'm not gonna hold this up, but I would, if they wanna come work for us in a area of which we need talent, then we should think about strengthening that or creating some sort of system where they stay, they stay within the district. This is a, I assume we have more open roles than we will have students.
I'm leaning over to our HR, and she noted that we definitely can look into tying that to their, when they become employees of Memphis Shelby County Schools?
Yes.
Something dealing with, as they come on board, as a hiring, so we can look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there some type of effect on us for not having this last school year?
I always believe, and I'll let Donna answer this, well, I always believe that we definitely wanna be part of this, so we can recruit students to come work with us. So I would say, Ms. Coleman, we just wanna definitely sell our, sell our district, make sure that we have that opportunity, so I can't say how many students we may have missed through the graduate program on last year. Donna, can you answer?
No, I'm not sure how many we missed, we did not get the contract approved because of the process, however, we do have affiliations with other universities. We had from Union University, we, this is the graduate psychology program, we also have the School of Social Work programs, so we did have social workers last year. You're welcome.
Board Member McKissick?
Thank you, Chair. I'm excited about this, I've seen it in action in terms of the graduate students and working with young people, and just, a lot of the graduate students are younger themselves, and so it really works out nicely how they connect with students. My question is, so that we're not getting to, getting into a situation where we have another year of lapse, how can we ensure that, say, next year, that this becomes just an ongoing thing where we don't have these gap years like we had last academic school year?
Thank you, Board Member McKissick and Superintendent Richmond, I think that's a fair question, so the one thing that we are, we're doing a couple of things, we're tracking our contracts and forecasting, so we can make sure that we get those contracts to you earlier. Also, I think what Dr. Richmond has pushed us is to make sure that, and plus for the years, it's '25 through '28 school years. So we tried to capture the years as much as we could to make sure, but even after that, making sure we forecast any contract or any MOU that we need to have yearly.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Board Member McKinney, second by Board Member Murphy, roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Garcia?
Aye.
Board Member Porter?
Aye.
Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McKinney?
Aye.
Board Member Otay?
Aye.
Board Member Williams?
Aye.
Board Chair Coleman?
Aye.
You have nine and the affirmative.
Thank you, that motion passes. We're now on to the Head Start. Head Start? Resolution?
Yes, this is a resolution, as I said before, as we shift from Head Start and we shift it over to Porter Leaf, we are required to shift all of those assets, and I'll let G.C. Bailey explain to you what this is, in terms of just making sure that we make this as seamless as possible, so that they can open doors next week.
Thank you, Board Member McKinney. So I'll read the resolution into the record first. Resolution to authorize interim superintendent to enter into temporary occupancy agreement, whereas prior to July 21, 2025, SCBE was the Head Start Program grantee and local education agency for the Memphis Shelby County Tennessee Geographical Area, Service Area, for at least the previous two five-year grant periods, and in this role received federal Head Start Program funds and real property for the purpose of operating the Head Start Program. Whereas July 21, 2025, on July 21, 2025, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Administration for Children and Families, Head Start Program 42 USC 9081, 45 CFR 1301, notified SCBE that Porter Leaf would be the Head Start Program grantee for the 2025 grant period for the service area, whereas in SCBE's role as incumbent Head Start Program grantee, effective July 22, 2025, and Porter Leaf's role as the Head Start Program grantee, effective July 22, 2025, SCBE and Porter Leaf, the parties have been participating and continue to participate in the fiscal and operational closeout and transition of the Head Start Program Service Area Grant, the Service Area Award, which includes but is not limited to the transition of and/or disposition of assets in the form of real property and personal property previously acquired by SCBE with the approval of the Head Start Program during the period it served as the grantee, whereas SCBE in its role as the incumbent grantee and local education agency now desires to collaborate with and reasonably cooperate with Porter Leaf as the newly appointed grantee to allow access and use of said assets SCBE previously acquired, in accordance with Service Area Award to promote the continuity of the Service Area Award and simultaneously allow SCBE as the incumbent grantee, and Porter Leaf as grantee adequate opportunity to participate in the Service Area Award transition process. Be it therefore resolved that the interim superintendent and/or district staff as the interim superintendent shall direct, is hereby authorized to enter into a temporary occupancy and use agreement on behalf of SCBE with Porter Leaf grantee, which agreement shall set forth appropriate terms to govern the use and occupancy of the real and personal property, which is anticipated to be subject to the transition of Service Area Award described herein during the transition period. Be it further resolved that the board has approved entry into the agreement as described herein, after review and substantive approval from the SCBE Office of General Counsel, and no further board action shall be required for the district to enter into the agreement for the purposes set forth in this resolution dated today, and with the signature line for Board Member McKinney. As Board Member McKinney summarized earlier, what this allows essentially is for Porter Leaf to go ahead, begin operating out of Covington Pike Head Start, Douglas Head Start, and Ridgeway Early Learning Center, while the parties, Porter Leaf and Memphis Shelby County Schools, continue to work through the transition process, making sure that deeds are transferred and personal property and assets are transferred, all property that was acquired with Head Start funds by Memphis Shelby County Schools. So this will allow Porter Leaf to go ahead and, and start operating out of those facilities beginning September 1, so that they can, there's, we can ensure that there's no gap in services for Head Start services to those families, and to make sure that we're in compliance with federal regulations. So, are there any questions?
I'd like to sign on to this resolution.
There being no further questions, may I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Board Member Hugh Garcia, second by Board Member Murphy, roll call vote, please. I apologize, Board Member McKissick.
I'm her doppelganger.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Garcia?
Aye.
Board Member Porter?
Aye.
Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Board Member Love? Board Member, Board Member McKinney?
Aye.
Board Member Otay?
Aye.
Board Member Williams? Board Chair Coleman?
Aye.
You have eight and the affirmative.
Thank you, that motion passes. I would also like to sign on to the...
Me as well.
Resolution? Resolution for school board governance training?
Board members, I'll quickly read this in, whereas ongoing professional development and governance best practices, fiscal oversight, strategic planning, and policy development is essential for school board members to fulfill their duties and responsibilities effectively, and whereas the Shelby County Board of Education, the board recognizes the need for board governance training to strengthen its collective capacity and enhance individual member effectiveness, and whereas effective governance training is anticipated to advance student success by fostering a cohesive vision and measurable goals, clarifying board roles, aligning policies and annual district budgets with equitable and student-focused objectives, enhancing community trust and engagement, and promoting sustainable governance practices, and whereas the board has received proposals and is prepared to select a provider that possesses the expertise and experience necessary to deliver high-quality governance training, be it therefore resolved that the board, following an official vote, selects and agrees to engage whoever we decide to provide board governance and training, and requests the board chair to work with the general counsel to negotiate a contract with whomever we decide for such services and compliance with board policy and within the budgetary allocations for professional development on this blank day of August 2025. Natalie J. McKinney, District 2, if you recall, we talked about, I gave everyone, we gave everyone, all of the folks that had responded, remember, we got two proposals early in February for council, great city schools, school board partners, and then we subsequently decided we wanted to, to see if there were any other folks that we might wanna look at, and I think that was Case Sharray LLC, K-12 Coalition, West Ed, and MGT. All of you have had an opportunity to look at that, and I believe we, we need to make a decision as to who we wanna move forward with our governance training, which includes goals, visioning, and core beliefs and commitments. So I'll leave it open to that.
Board Member Murphy?
I wanna see Murphy, District 7 would like to sign on.
Someone tell me, who would you, I think Council for Great City Schools, I'll make a, Council for Great City Schools has been working with us. They did the audit, and they worked with us on our board retreat, and I think that that would make sense, and I think we all talked about that during the board retreat. So if there's, if everybody agrees, consensus.
I signed on now.
You signed on?
I'm signed on.
Yes, she signed on.
Board Member Otay?
I'd like to sign on as well.
Board Member Hugh Garcia?
I like the suggestion of, within the blank, we add Council of Great City Schools. I do think the consistency is there, I also like the timing of this, because we can govern ourselves, and this, this is a, this is the right time to do that, so thanks for bringing this, and you can add my name as well.
I would like to second that about Council of Great City Schools, and add my name to it also. Vice Chair Love?
I was beginning to feel like Michelle McKissick.
I want to sign my name to the resolution, and I'm in agreement of your recommendation.
I do sincerely apologize. I did not see the light. Board Member McKissick, I saw the light.
Thank you, Chair. So would it be appropriate, Dr. Schultz, if just we all signed on to this to make it unanimous as a board, how do you go about doing it? I wanna sign on, but, you know. Okay, there you have it. Everybody. Everybody.
May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Board Member McKissick, second by Board Member Murphy, roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Garcia?
Aye.
Board Member Porter?
Aye.
Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McKinney?
Aye.
Board Member Otay?
Aye.
Board Member Williams? Board Chair Coleman?
Aye.
You have nine and the affirmative.
Thank you, that motion passes. Our last agenda item, resolution approving MSCS board member's strategic school fund allocations for August 2025, 105,000, excuse me, $700. May I have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Garcia?
Aye.
Board Member Porter?
Aye.
Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
What, what is wrong, what?
Board Member McKinney?
Abstain.
Board Member Otay?
Aye.
Board Member Williams? Board Chair Coleman?
Aye.
You have eight and the affirmative and one abstain.
Thank you, that motion passes. There being no further business before this party, with meeting is adjourned, thank you.